Thank you all for coming, those of you that are here. We are the Eugene Planning Commission, and tonight we will be holding a public hearing on an appeal of the hearings official's decision denying the Shamati Trails PUD, City File PDT 15-1. To start, I'd like each of the commissioners to introduce themselves, and then I will take a few minutes to explain our role and how tonight's hearing will go. My name is John Jaworski, and I'm currently the Chair. To my left...
My name is Kristin Taylor, and I'm currently the Vice Chair.
I'm Jeff Mills.
I'm Steve Baker.
I'm Reena Kalalo.
And Bill Randall.
At this time, I would like to take a moment to explain who the Planning Commission is and our role. We are unpaid volunteers appointed by the Eugene City Council to four-year terms on the commission. This commission often makes recommendations to the city council on legislative matters such as plan amendments and adoption of new land use regulations. We also hear appeals of decisions made by a city hearing official. Tonight, we will be hearing an appeal of a decision made by the city's hearing official denying the proposed development. The Planning Commission will make the final decision on this matter at the local level, but I want to make it clear that we will not be making a decision tonight. We will hold at least one additional meeting in the next few weeks to deliberate after we've heard the testimony before making our decision on the appeal. If there are any further appeals after our decision, they will go to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. Some of the terms we have used are legalistic. We've done this in the past, so I will try to explain the requirements in plain English the best that I can. Since this is an appeal hearing, there are unique procedures which we are legally required to follow. The decision of the Planning Commission on this appeal is considered quasi-judicial, so we will use quasi-judicial format for this public hearing. In a nutshell, this means we have a certain order of speakers that we will need to follow, and there are certain rules or criteria that our decision must be based upon. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to receive relevant testimony on the appeal before us. I want to remind everyone that your testimony must be directed toward the appeal issues and the approval criteria that the speaker believes to apply. No new evidence can be accepted by the Planning Commission, and we can only accept testimony related to evidence that is already on the record. What this means is that you should be testifying about the material and information already presented to the hearing official in the first public hearing process, whether or not you think he made a mistake based on the approval criteria for the PUD and the evidence he had at that time. Quite lengthy. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing should have already submitted a completed request-to-speak form to staff. This is the green forms that are in the back of the room. If you wish to speak and you have not already done so, please submit that form now. Once the public hearing is open, speakers will be called in the order: one, the applicant, and then those in support of the application; two, those with a neutral position; and three, those opposed to the application. I know commissioners have asked more clarity when it's appropriate to ask questions, and staff has suggested that we should ask these questions at the end of each person's testimony. So if you're testifying and you're finished, don't leave immediately. We'll ask to see if any commissioners have a question of you. At the end of all the testimony, staff will have a chance to respond if they so desire, and commissioners will also have the opportunity to ask questions of staff. That will ensure the applicant has the opportunity to address all these comments as part of their final rebuttal. To be clear, under state law, the applicant has the burden of proof. This means that it is the applicant's job to demonstrate that they satisfy each and every approval criterion. It is not the opponent's job to prove that the applicant has failed to demonstrate compliance. Because the applicant has the burden of proof, they will always get the last chance to provide a final rebuttal or have the last word. I'm also supposed to remind you, and everyone, that the failure to raise an issue without sufficient specificity to allow the Planning Commission and parties to respond will preclude further appeal on that issue. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to this issue also precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. In other words, now is your opportunity to raise issues as clearly as you can so that the city and other parties involved in this case can address them. Before we begin, the Eugene Code also requires that the planning commissioners disclose any conflicts of interest, ex-party contacts, biases, or abstentions. In a quasi-judicial proceeding like this one, the parties are entitled to an impartial or neutral decision-maker. To ensure this fair consideration, the rules attempt to limit ex-party contacts or communications between a party and the decision-maker outside the public hearing process. Each planning commissioner must disclose or describe the substance of any communication they have had about the case outside the public process. The planning commissioners may also disclose any potential conflicts of interest, that is, whether the decision they are about to make could or would result in a personal financial gain to themselves, their business, or a member of their household. Finally, a planning commissioner cannot participate if he or she is biased, that is, for whatever reason, he or she is incapable of rendering an objective decision in this case. At this time, I'd like to ask, do any commissioners have anything to disclose? Hearing none. Does anyone in the audience or a member of the commission wish to challenge the impartiality of any of the planning commissioners? Hearing none. Okay. Should have done this maybe earlier. I'll now call this meeting to order, and now I'll ask staff to provide a brief introduction before we begin testimony.
All right. Thanks a lot. Whoa, that's loud. Before I get started, I just wanted to mention that to everybody in the audience as well that we did send the planning commissioners a site plan that was in the record and was submitted before this hearing, but per the applicant's request, we sent it over to them. And just to clarify the difference in this site plan versus the original one submitted in the very beginning, during the hearings official hearing, one of the neighbors pointed out an issue with slope on the site and said that there should be more areas on the site that should be calculated as having over that 20% slope. And so this updated map just shows some of those areas. The applicant went back and did some revisions. And if there's any more detailed questions about that, I can defer those to the applicant, perhaps, to answer. But that's the basic difference between the original site plan and the one that was emailed to you. Both are in the record, though. So, thank you for the introduction. This is a...we'll just get started here, and I'll give a really brief introduction before we jump in. This is a vicinity map here showing the property. This is, again, attached to the AIS. I'll just mention that all the graphics I'm going to show quickly here are attached to the AIS, and they were a part of the staff report to the hearings official. So they're all part of the record. We're in the very south part of Eugene here, off of West Amazon Drive, near the corner of Fox Hollow Drive and West Amazon Drive. And you can see just south of that star there, the star of the property, just south of there is the city limits. So the proposal is a planned unit development with 10 single-family residential lots and one open-space lot. It's approximately 5.19 acres, and the proposed density comes out to 1.9 units per acre. The access that the applicant has proposed is a private drive connected to West Amazon So the hearings official reviewed the case and determined that the proposal is not consistent with the needed housing approval criteria. We just want to be really clear that there are two sets of criteria that applicants can choose from. There's the general criteria, which are supposed to be more subjective, and then there's the needed housing criteria, which are supposed to be more clear and objective. In this case, the applicant elected to submit the application under the needed housing criteria. So that's an important point of this appeal. And then in the end, the hearings official found that the applicant's proposal did not satisfy EC 9.83256C, which we refer to in all of our documents for short as the 19-lot Rule. And that's really the subject of tonight's appeal. So the basic evaluation that the hearings official found was, there's more than 19 lots that use West Amazon as a single means of ingress and egress. The standard basically requires that dispersal of motor vehicle traffic onto more than one public local street is provided for the planned unit development. In this case, their staff found and the hearings official agreed that there's only one way in or out for motor vehicles at this location. And just to clarify, the proposed PUD does not propose any new public local streets that would provide secondary access. So this is just a map showing the subject property in the hatch red. This is also attached to your AIS if you want to see it more clear, but it shows a subject property that's hatched down at the south there, and then it shows West Amazon Drive, and then the current location or approximate location of the dead end that currently exists there. And I'll show a picture of what that dead end looks like in a second. The green line that continues is the unimproved right-of-way that's currently in city park land, so that is an important piece of this, but that's just a map to give you an idea of what's around the property here. This is a little bit hard to see, but this is a picture that we took when we went down to the bottom of West Amazon Drive, looking to the northeast, and there's a big block there. And then it basically turns into an access road and then a trail from there. So there's no vehicle access here. This is also attached to the Agenda Item Summary, but it shows the subject property in red, and then just a highlight of all the different properties around that use this dead end of West Amazon Drive to get back out to Fox Hollow Road. And that's also explained a little more in detail in the AIS. So that really concludes our brief introduction, and I'll give it back to you, Mr. Jaworski.
Thank you. At this time, I will now open the public hearing with testimony from the applicant and followed by those in support of the application. Please give your name and address when you speak.
So I've got a green card that's also from the applicant, so...
Is that my name?
It is your name. So I'll let Bill close, so...
I know that fellow. He's a rascal. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Staff, City Attorney, Bill Close for the applicant, 375 West Fourth Street, Suite 204 Eugene, 97401. It's always nice to be back. I have distributed some hard copy things that most of you probably have in front of you, but not all of you, because some of you are working off of laptops, I understand, or iPads or something. And I just wanted to use the appeal statement that I wrote as kind of a topic outline for my remarks tonight. I had the pleasure of writing this appeal statement in Hawaii, because your decision came out like early...the hearings official's decision was in the first couple of days of December, and the appeal deadline was on the 16th, so this is the best work I can do in Hawaii. I am not going to slog through this whole appeal statement. I'm going to try to simplify this. This is really, bigger picture, this is my second experience with the Needed Housing South Hills application that was denied by hearings official and appealed to the Planning Commission. Last go-around, I think that decision is in the record, last go-around, it was the Dearburg Project by the Beverleys. So I hope to do as well this time. I would like to divide my remarks into two very discreet chunks. If I could ask you to just mentally draw a really heavy black line from top to bottom. I want to talk about one kind of issue in the first half, and then we'll put that aside, and we'll talk about the more complex issue, which is the needed housing statute in the second half. If I can convince you that I'm right on the first issue, you don't really need to get to the needed housing sticky stuff. And I do think that the first issue, which is strictly a code interpretation issue, is both simple and really attractive. And so, on the first side of our dark right line, we have the language of the 19-lot rule, which is there on page two of my appeal statement. Let me just read it. "The street layout of the proposed PUD shall disperse motor vehicle traffic onto more than one public local street when the PUD exceeds 19 lots, or when the sum of proposed PUD lots and the existing lots utilizing a local street as the single means of ingress and egress exceeds 19." So that's our sticking point when we just consider code language. If the commission finds that our proposal meets that standard, then you can approve this, actually, you would have to approve it, and we can all go home happy. The sticky issue here is, what the heck does the term "disperse" mean? And I would venture that if, looking at the site plan which I handed out, if looking at that site plan, it was plain that West Amazon, north of this property, were not barricaded off and were improved all the way through the parkland to the north, then the city staff would agree that cars coming out of this project could turn left and go wherever they wanted, like Springfield, or come all the way around to the other end of the project, or they could turn right and go north and go wherever they wanted to go, and even come around back from the south. But that's not the situation we have here. Here, if a car comes out of this project and turns left, they're in good shape. They can go to Springfield. If a car comes out and turns right, they go about 1,000 feet and hit that barrier across the public street. Now, in terms of looking at code definition, staff will agree that the public street continues right through that barrier and right through that unimproved right-of-way, because "street" is defined as including an unimproved right-of-way. So we have a street, in the meaning of the code, that runs forever to the south and forever to the north. And in the staff report to the hearings official, staff agree that we meet technically, I think the phrase was, technically, this application meets the standard, because traffic is dispersed. You can come out, you can turn right onto a street, and the standard doesn't talk about being able to actually travel it. So that's our sticking point. Our suggestion to you is that we need to settle on a definition for the term "disperse." What does the term "disperse" mean in the context of the code, this code standard? We're not talking about numbers of lots or anything. It's true that the total number of lots in this area that have one way in or one way out, we're already way over 19. We're at 30-something. But what does it mean to disperse? And there are two possible interpretations. One interpretation is what I call the "get-out" interpretation. You can get out of the site and move away. You're dispersed away from the site. The other interpretation is what I call the "go-around" meaning. Now, we advocated to the hearings official that "disperse" in the context of this code standard means just get out. You can turn right, you can go 1,000 feet. That's dispersed. And the staff said, no, that can't be it. Technically, you meet that definition, but that can't be what it means. And the hearings official agreed, and so the hearings official adopted what I've termed the "go-around" interpretation. And the "go-around" interpretation boils down to secondary access. That is, you can come out of the project, you can turn right, and you have to be able to go all the way out into the real world and come all the way back around and get to the site from the south, just like you can come out of the project, turn south, and go all the way out in the real world, and then come back in. That's the "go-around" meaning. So what is it? Is it get out or is it go around? And I think our simplest approach to this is to focus on what the hearings official said the real meaning is, which is secondary access. You've got to have secondary access. And our suggestion to you is, if the city council had intended that "disperse" requires secondary access, then the city council would have used the phrase "secondary access" in the standard itself. And why would I say that? I would say that because there are other places in the code where the city has used the phrase "secondary access." So what we know is that when the city council intends secondary access, they use the phrase "secondary access," and they didn't do that here, so they must mean something else. And so our conclusion is that you say it can't mean secondary access because it doesn't say secondary access, so it means something else. And we have the something else. We have the something less. You can get out and you can go somewhere. You don't have to go around. You don't have to have secondary access. So that's our simplest theory. And I would suggest that it's a really pretty basic proposition of law that if you have two different terms in the code, "disperse" and "secondary access," the presumption is they have different meanings. You would never, on the normal course, say "disperse" means the same as "secondary access" because they're different terms. It's presumed they have different meanings. And so that's our rationale for saying "disperse" does not mean secondary access. Now, dropping back and looking at something you really shouldn't be looking at, there was a discussion in the proceeding before the hearings official about the need for secondary access in order to have fire safety. And I think everybody finally agreed that that wasn't the case, because we meet the fire code. We can meet the fire code by having structures that are sprinkled. And although the hearings official suggests that the fire chief opposed this application, in fact, the final communication from the fire chief supported the application. He said in a simple email, I believe it was, "This project meets the fire code because the units can be sprinkled." And then to supplement, it's not about fire safety theory, because that was a very attractive theory to people that were opposed to this project in front of the hearings official. It's about fire. And so to bolster our argument that it wasn't about fire, that "disperse" didn't mean secondary access, we went back and looked at the legislative history of this standard. And this standard showed up in the 2001 total makeover of the zoning code, where the zoning code went from 1-inch thick to 4 inches thick. And I have the benefit of having all 17,086 pages of the legislative history of that, because the home builders appealed the whole code in 2001. So I have all that to look through, and I looked through it all. And basically, the legislative history shows that the 19-lot rule was not adopted for purposes of fire safety. In fact, you really got to wonder why they adopted it, because, for example, if you develop this site through a series of partitions, you know, three parcels at a time, three parcels, you would not need to meet the 19-lot rule. That is, the 19-lot rule does not apply if you get to 10 units on this property through a series of partitions, but it does apply if you have the temerity to try to get to the 10 units in a single application, planned unit development under the needed housing standards. So what's the rationale of that? Who knows? But it's not about fire safety, because if it was about fire safety, logically it would apply any way you wanted to develop houses. So that's the big picture on the code interpretation approach to resolving this. If you can agree with us that "disperse" does not mean secondary access, because if it meant secondary access, it would say that, because that phrase is used somewhere else. If you can agree with us that the hearings official got it wrong, and this proposal meets the definition of "disperse," then you can approve this application, and it all kind of ends there. So that pretty much brings me to the end of my first half. And so now we're going to move to the other half of the big, dark, black line. And on the other side of that line, we get to the needed housing statute. And that is, in my appeal statement, that is issue two, which starts on page six. And our pitch here is, this gets pretty complex, but the basic pitch is that the needed housing statute prohibits, it applies directly to decisions like this. It cuts through codes and everything. It just applies directly. And it prohibits the city from applying any standard that's not clear and objective. And so we said to the hearings official, hey, we're arguing about what this standard means, the 19-lot rule. Everybody knows what 19 means, but we're arguing about what the term "disperse" means. And there are at least two ways of interpreting the word "disperse." One means secondary access, like the hearings official found, and the other means something less, as the staff suggested in the original staff report, that this application, strictly speaking, needs. So if you have two different plausible interpretations of the standard, the 19-lot rule, and under one of them, the project can be approved, and under the other one, it can be denied, then that standard is so ambiguous that the statute says you're not allowed to apply it, because the statute says thou shalt only apply clear and objective standards. So the key point about applying the needed housing statute to this application is, are there multiple applications, one of which results in approval and one of which results in a denial? I think the answer is yes. Now, the hearings official said no. The hearings official said, this standard, the 19-lot rule, is clear and objective, and I just suggest to you he plainly got it wrong, because all of you can understand the two possible interpretations. When you posit the two possible interpretations, you look at them in front of you, you're going to like one more than the other one. But that's not the question. The question is, is there more than one plausible interpretation? Plausible is a loose standard. And if there is, then it's the standard too ambiguous to apply. And that is the gist of our needed housing statute argument. I've quoted the needed housing statute at the bottom of page six and on the top of page seven. There are two parts to it here that I've quoted. I like this statute. Except as provided in subsection six below of this section, a local government may adopt and apply only clear and objective standards, conditions, and procedures regulating the development of needed housing on buildable lands described in subsection three of this section. The standards, conditions, and procedures may not have the effect, either in themselves or cumulatively, of discouraging needed housing through unreasonable cost or delay. That is the standard that we're invoking to suggest we're entitled to an approval, because the 19-lot rule can't be applied, because it's sufficiently ambiguous that it can result in approval or denial. And then you get to subsection six of the statute, which is quoted in the top of page seven. I want to talk about that just briefly, because it's an important part of this. It says, starts out saying blah, blah, blah. It says, "A local government may adopt and apply an alternative approval process for applications and permits for residential development based on approval criteria regulating in whole or in part appearance or aesthetics that are not clear and objective if," and then number A is the big one, "the applicant retains the option of proceeding under the approval process that meets the requirements of subsection four." That is, the city's... That is, the city is only allowed to apply fuzzy standards, discretionary standards, ambiguous standards, if the applicant has the right to get an approval under clear and objective standards. And we don't have that right here. So I distributed with my materials, this needed housing statute theory is not popular with the city staff, not popular with the city attorney. It's generally poo-pooed at the city, I think. It's really not popular. But I included these here materials, and I briefed to the hearings official a case in Corvallis, which I had the pleasure of litigating, which is very recent, a decision from Luba on August 25, 2015. And although it's factually complex, it's a clone of this situation. And I actually gave you a copy of the decision because it's such exciting reading. I really, it's not exciting. It's kind of dense reading, but I gave it to you because it's so on point. And so I'm going to summarize it for you in layman's terms. And by the way, the city was so shocked at this decision from Luba that it appealed to the Court of Appeals, and the Court of Appeals affirmed. So this is pretty stout law. The situation in this project in Corvallis was a 10-unit apartment house on eight tenths of an acre, a platted lot at the end of a cul-de-sac in a subdivision, classically developable property. This piece of property actually happened to be zoned for multifamily project, the only one in the subdivision, historical accident. But there was a minimum density of 10 units. Because of the acreage, point eight tenths of an acre, it had to have a minimum unit count of 10 units on it. Not popular in the neighborhood, not popular with the staff, not popular with the planning commission. City council hated it. But the application was filed, the landowner invoked the needed housing statute. They were required to go through the PUD process because there was a PD overlay on the property. Now, the PD in Corvallis is just like a PD in Eugene, very fuzzy standards, compatibility, fit with the surrounding neighborhood, so on and so forth, and invitation to say no. And the city said no. And they said no for about five reasons. And so the denial was appealed to the Landes Board of Appeals, and Luba said, okay, this site is on the buildable lands inventory, like this one. Let's look at these standards, which the city is saying no. And they focused on the key standard, and the key standard was a condition on the property from 1981. See your materials. I'm going to summarize it. The condition from 1981 approval that applied to a larger piece of ground on which this piece of property was a part said that development of, it was a congregate facility that was developed, approved for development in 1981, and the condition said that development shall be set back 135 feet from the south property line. And what we're dealing with here was an eight tenths of an acre that was in that 135-foot setback, which between 1981 and 1992 had been carved off as a separate platted lot. And so the city said, well, you know, that condition 12 says that this, it's a setback to development, so this eight tenths of an acre is open space for the congregate facility. You can't develop it. And the applicant said, no, that's not what that condition means. That condition means that the congregate facility that was approved in 1981 has to be set back 135 feet from the property line. It was set back. It doesn't say anything about what happens in the 135-foot setback. In the meantime, since 1981, that property was partitioned off, it was sold, and the application came in to put the eight tenths of, 10 units on that eight tenths of an acre. So Luba said, there are two ways of interpreting this condition. One way is treating condition as an open space requirement for this eight tenths of an acre. So the answer is no, you can't develop it. You can't put 10 units on it. And the other way of interpreting it is, the building was done in 1981, has to be set back 135 feet. It is possible to get a development approval for the eight tenths of an acre that's between the south property line and the building that went up in 1981. So Luba said, we don't have to interpret it. All we have to do is recognize that there are two possible interpretations. One of those results in an approval, and one of them results in a denial. It's so ambiguous that it's not clear and objective. So under the needed housing statute, the city may not apply that standard. And because they can't apply it, we're going to reverse your denial, and you have to approve it. And that's the outcome at Luba. And the city appealed it to the Court of Appeals, and this can't be right. And the Court of Appeals approved it. And there's nothing really special about that particular Luba decision. It's consistent with a long line of cases that apply the needed housing statute. I just gave it to you because the situation is exactly like the situation we have here. You have a single standard, the 19-lot rule, that's susceptible to two interpretations, one of which says yes to the project and one of which says no to the project. And so I'm suggesting that if Luba were to look at this situation, Luba would say, you can't apply the 19-lot rule because it's too ambiguous to comply with the needed housing statute. So that is the gist of it. And I have excerpted for you on page eight four, five paragraphs from the Luba decision in the Corvallis case. These are the chunks of Luba's rationale that are just the nuggets, the logic of how they think about, the logic of how that needed housing statute applies to a particular development proposal. So I would recommend that list of five excerpts to you as a script for the way you should think about this situation, because I think that's the way Luba would think about this At the bottom of page nine, I respond to a couple of comments, observations by the city attorney. At the end of the hearings official, in the post-hearing briefing, in front of the hearings official, the city attorney submitted a memo addressing the applicability of the needed housing statute to this project. And of course, the city doesn't like it. But what I've done here at the bottom of page nine is I've excerpted the two major So I would refer you to those. I think the most interesting comment by the city attorney is the second comment, which is, this project doesn't meet the standard. They can always go, apply, take their chances, was the phrase. They take their chances under the general standards. Go apply for a tentative PUD approval under the general standards, which are all discretionary. And I would suggest to you that is exactly contrary to what the needed housing statute says. If you go back up to where I quoted from the needed housing statute, what it says is that the city may only apply the general standards, discretionary standards, if the applicant has a right to develop under clear and objective standards. So that makes the general standards an opt-in, not a punishment. You know, if the city's saying, my client can always go take his chances under the general standards, but can't get an approval under the clear and objective needed housing standards, that violates the statute. The owner has an absolute right to develop property. It's in the buildable lands inventory under clear and objective standards. I think the city attorney also suggested that the needed housing statute doesn't mean that every piece of property is developable under clear and objective standards. Some might not be. I would take issue with that. And I'm going to drop back and go big, high level here. When the city prepares a buildable lands inventory, which it has, the most recent buildable lands inventory is from 1999. We're trying to update it. We spent seven years now trying to update it as part of the vision. A small piece of the vision will be a new buildable lands inventory. Right now, we're working with the 1999 buildable lands inventory. When that buildable lands inventory was given to the state and acknowledged, blessed with holy water, as being in compliance with the state program, the city was vouching to the state that this inventory of land, includes this property, this inventory of land has enough land to accommodate development for 20 years. The implication is the property's got to be developable at some point. And yet, staff is saying, the record says, is clear, the staff's saying, that barrier's not coming out. That barrier's there for the foreseeable future. So the city's really saying now, huh, suddenly, this five-acre piece of ground, which is in the buildable lands inventory, which the city vouched to the state is developable under clear and objective standards, that five-acre chunk is really not developable under clear and objective standards. The owner has to go take his chances under the general standards, and we can say no. So I think, so sort of a corollary of what I'm saying is that if property is in the buildable lands inventory, you have to start with the assumption that it is in fact developable under clear and objective standards. So that's the big picture. The third issue in our appeal is kind of a fun issue. It's the 30-foot landscape, fun is not quite the right word. It's novel. The 30-foot landscape buffer standard. It's another standard that only applies to people who have the courage to apply under the needed housing statute. And what it does is it says, around the perimeter of your project, you've got to have a 30-foot landscape buffer with no structures in it. The standard says, the PUD provides, it's quoted on page 10, "The PUD provides a buffer area between the proposed development and surrounding properties by providing at least a 30-foot wide landscape area along the perimeter of the PUD, according to the landscaping standards." This is a pesky standard because earlier interpretation by the hearings official says, no fences in there because that's a structure. So you've got a 30-foot ring around the entire project that's got to be open and landscaped. Not such a big deal if you have a big project like the Beverly's project, which is 26 acres. You've got acre, you've got some space to play with. But when you have a small project like this, like an infill project, and you put a 30-foot landscape buffer around the whole thing where there can't be any structures, you've got a real problem. The city staff, with the help of the hearings official, created a little escape hatch in 2004. They said, well, that doesn't really mean you have to have a landscaping buffer on the part of the perimeter that's adjacent to a street. Otherwise, you wouldn't be able to get in the project. And we said, that's right. You wouldn't be able to get in the project. So you can't apply the standard. Because the standard, applied according to its plain terms, won't let you develop the property. And as we know, if property's in the buildable lands inventory, it's got to be developable under clear and objective standards. It can't be not developable under clear and objective standards. When we, I'm just going to take a couple more minutes. I'm really sorry. When we appealed the new code in 2001 for the home builders, Luba issued an 80-page decision going through a lot of complaints about the code. Half of the complaints had to do with goal five resources and how they were treated or not treated. The other half had to do with the needed housing statute. And there were probably 30 or 35 issues. What we did was we identified standards in the new code that we thought were not in compliance with the needed housing statute. And one of them was a standard that was clear and objective, but it was so stringent that it wouldn't allow development on the site. It was a stormwater standard. It basically said something like, stormwater generated by the site shall not have negative impacts on receiving waters. And what we said was, any development generates a moat of stormwater, some increment, and every bit of stormwater carries a little bit of sediment, erosion. And anybody can look at that and say, that's a negative impact. And Luba agreed with us. They said, the needed housing statute means you have to have clear and objective standards that allow development. You can't have clear and objective standards that prevent development. Because a clear and objective standard that prevents development is a basis for denial in the guise of a clear and objective approval standard. So Luba sent the code back for that reason, among about 40 or 50 other reasons. And when the city went through the code and made changes to comply with Luba's remand order, this is the 2001 code, they had to change that standard. It adjusted it, made it more reasonable. So both of these standards, the 19-lot rule and this 30-foot buffer, are the same kind of standard. This 30-foot wide buffer is really a basis for denial in the guise of a clear and objective approval standard. And what the city's done here, which is to read language into that code, saying, well, this doesn't apply next to a street. That's the wrong approach. Because I would say, very simply, there is no basis for reading that, the plain language of that standard, as not applying in the 30-foot adjacent, 30-foot perimeter adjacent to a street. You can't read it in there. You can say, we're going to assume that's the case because it would be absurd to block access to the property. But that's the wrong approach. What the city should say is, that standard is a basis for denial in the guise of a clear and objective standard for approval. So it's contrary to the statute, so it may not be applied at all. That's what we're asking. And so that kind of sums it up. I droned on a little too long. I'm sorry. But as I said, bright, dark, fat line, the simple solution's on the left. Just look at the code language. More complex, a more interesting and exciting solution is on the right, looking at the needed housing statute. Either way can get us there. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yes. Do the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Cluse?
I have two.
I've got multiple, but I'll ask one, and then we'll go around.
No limits.
I just want to make sure I understand your most recent set of statements, Mr. Cluse, and it has to do with building inventory being counted as buildable only if it's subject and buildable under clear and objective standards. Is that what you're saying specifically?
Exactly. Now, you will not find support for that proposition in the city attorney's office. But when you, that's what the Group BK stands for. And this issue, we will press, I'm confident the home builders will press this in the appeal of the vision inventory.
I just want to make sure I was clear on that. I'll yield and come back. Commissioner Taylor.
And the reason, of course, is if property is in your buildable lands inventory, it's not developable under clear and objective standards. If it's only developable under general standards, you can't say you've got an inventory. Because the moment you're in general standards, the city can say yes, the city can say no. So it's only clear and objective standards on your inventory that gets you a real inventory.
So I just would love for you to clarify the second paragraph, page nine, of your December 16 letter. And it says, the paragraph starts, the very same rationale applies here.
Yes.
You say, if the commission agrees with staff and the applicant, is that what you meant to say?
Yeah. And the reason I say that is because in the initial staff report to the hearings official, the staff said, technically, this application complies with the 19-lot rule because the definition of street includes improved or unimproved street. And there it is. It runs to the north. It's continuous. It doesn't have to be improved. And then they backed off of that and said, well, but that can't mean what it's, that can't really mean what it says. I think they got it right the first time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did I have any other commissioners before going? Okay. Commissioner Baker, and then back to Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions regarding, I'm looking at this, this is considered, I think it's, I can't remember which attachment it is, attachment E, I believe.
Okay, right. That's my appeal letter.
No, no, no. This is attachment E in the record. The Fire Department comments for Eugene Springfield Planning Department. It's page 449 in the entire record. And it says here, note, this development may possibly create issues with the Fire Department access and evacuation from this area. Based on the information provided by the Eugene Planning Department, the number of single-family dwellings already exceeds. City street is in effect a dead end that does not reconnect with the southern section of West Amazon Drive and Martin Street. The Eugene Fire Code states, where the number of one- and two-family dwellings exceeds 30, there shall be provided two separate and approved fire apparatus access roads. So this, and these, also, there are some requirements for how those roads be placed, where they are placed within the record, within the diagonal of the property. And it goes on to say, in addition, the Eugene Code is more restrictive than the Fire Code requiring more than one public local street when the PUD exceeds 19 lots. So this would seem to apply So this would seem to imply that the Fire Department considers this to be an issue, and it doesn't consider that there's a, an unimproved road that that would meet the requirements of their fire, fire and life safety. I'm just trying to find, find where you said that, you mentioned that-
Yes.
-fire wasn't an issue.
Right.
But I just want to, you know, ask this question, then I have a follow-up question in that regard.
Sure. That was the Fire Department's first take on this when the matter was circulated for comment. And we got back to the Fire Department, we said, "Hey, by the way, tell us it's the case that we comply with the Fire Code if we sprinkle these units." And the chief said, "Yes, that's right." And there is a subsequent email in the record from the chief saying, "This can meet the Fire Code if the units are sprinkled." And we, of course, said, "That's a fine condition." So that's, that's the first point. The second point is that this 19-lot rule is not about fire safety. And that's summarized in my letter. Fire Code is separate, we always have to meet the fire, always have to meet the Fire Code, that's separate. And we went back into the legislative history on this, and we showed that this 19-lot rule is not about fire safety. If it were about fire safety, then you would, you'd, then that same issue would apply regardless of how you're getting housing approval. Remember, if we did three series of partitions under the needed housing partition standards, there's no 19-lot rule. So what's up with that? That makes no sense to say, if you develop a subdivision with 10 lots at one time, you have to meet the 19-lot rule because of fire issues. But if you do three series partitions and get to 10 lots, that way, you don't have to meet the 19-lot rule. Fire's, fire's not an issue. So it's not about fire. Completely separate from everything I just said to you, compliance with the standard you're talking about is not an issue in this, in this appeal.
I have one follow-up question I'd like to, if that's all right.
Go ahead.
And if you would like, Renee Cluff got the follow-up email from our engineer, got the follow-up email from the Fire Department, and she can point exactly in the record where that is.
Well, that's what my other question is.
Okay.
I'm looking at that from Gilbert Gordon, a deputy fire marshal, the letter in response. And, and I read it, says, "Yes, you are, and it's correct that there is an exception in the 2014 Eugene Fire Code." I want to make a point to staff, that was the 2014 Fire Code, the option of this, because I'm going to have a question for you when I come back. That all dwellings, units, when there are 30 dwelling units on a single public or private fire apparatus access road, that all dwelling units are equipped throughout with an approved fire sprinkler system in accordance with blah, blah, blah. So I'm trying to get a clarification. So are you saying that you are going to install sprinklers on all of the existing properties as well as this development?
Just the ones we're developing on this prop, on this site.
But this says all of the, this, this, this letter from the fire marshal says all of the properties. I'm trying to get a clarification whether you are implying that you will install sprinklers on these other properties, so-
No, sir.
This, so this, this, this exception would apply?
Yes.
It, it doesn't say some, it says all, so I'm trying to-
All, all units, the applicant has said is-
It says all units.
Okay.
All dwelling units are equipped, so-
We're not in control of the other 33 people who are already on the tail of the dog.
That's what I was trying to clarify, whether you had negotiated some-
No.
-arrangements with these so that you could use this rule to meet your requirement.
Not at all.
Okay, all right.
And, and the bigger picture, Fire Code's a Fire Code, zoning Code's a zoning Code. We absolutely have to comply with the Fire Code, we'll do it. And, and I mentioned briefly, this issue that you're raising right here is not in this appeal. And the scope of issues in this appeal is strictly limited to issues stated in the appeal statement. The city's gotten into trouble, into trouble on that in the past, and I think the case was Treadmill Joint Venture versus City of Eugene. Frustrated developer, I think, called his LLC Treadmill Joint Venture, Treadmill Joint Venture. But in that situation, there were three issues raised on appeal to the planning commission. The planning commission found your predecessors, found in favor of the applicant in all three, so fixed all three problems. And then, for some reason, they said, "Well, we want to change something else about this project." And so they tweaked the approval on two other issues. And Luba, on appeal, said, "No, you can't do that." You know, you, the guy goes to Luba to get his windshield, goes to the planning commission to get his windshield fixed, you can't fix the windshield and then break the rear window one is the way out the door. So the appeal is, the scope of the appeal is limited strictly to the issues that are raised in the, in the notice of appeal. And this is not an appeal about Fire Code.
Commissioner Mills.
Yes, Mr. Cluse, I have one more clarification, I want to make sure I understand your position. I'm, I'm going back to the, to the Code 983256C, which is the place where the term "disperse" is used.
Yes.
And I don't want to read the whole paragraph, but I'll read the first 10 or 12 words, and then I think we can talk. "The street layout of the proposed PUD shall disperse motor vehicle traffic onto more than one public local street." I just want to stop there because I think the rest of it is, is important, but, but the heart of this issue to me is, what does "disperse" mean in this case?
Right.
And, and I think, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you're saying it doesn't mean connect.
It, it means get out and not go around. It does not mean secondary access.
So my, my point is, though, is if this were, if instead of saying "disperse," it said "connect," that would be, that would, to me, be, I would say, more clear. But I think, I just want to make sure, your, your argument is that the word "disperse" does not require that it connect to more than one-
Right.
-public road.
That's exactly right.
That's what you're saying.
That's right.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on, on that's your position.
That's right.
Asking the staff on what their position is.
Yeah, that's right. And in the, the Beverly Deerbrook project, decision, decisions are in the record. And that's the project that's adjacent to the north, on the other side of the barrier, okay? And what the commission, again, that's one where the hearings official said, "No, I'm denying this." And this commission said, "We're approving it." But in the context of that approval, this commission said, "West Amazon goes through that project." I mean, right through it. And so the commission said, "If, if a person can get onto West Amazon and go north, that's one access, and go south, that's another access." But in that situation, we had, you know, if you turn north, you could go to Springfield; if you turn south, you could go to Springfield. So it was, it was secondary access is really what it was. All on, all by being able to turn two directions on West Amazon. We have exactly the same situation here, except that when you turn one way, you get a barrier. You're still on the right-of-way, it's not improved, you're on a barrier. And we're suggesting that that's still consistent with the term "disperse" because, because the standard doesn't say secondary access. Doesn't say connect. Connect is maybe, I don't know if connect, in your mind, means secondary access, might mean something different, might be between secondary access and dispersed, I don't know. But the key here is ambiguity. Multiple interpretations that can either approve or deny, it's too ambiguous to apply the standard.
Commissioner Taylor, I believe.
So, Mr. Cluse, can you, this is just for the benefit of everyone, if we look at the site plan, the tentative PUD, the tentative plan PUD in a sheet one, that, for the purposes of, I'm, I'm going to reference, because I don't have a copy sitting in front of me, the Attachment C-
I think I got it.
-in our packet, just so we can all talk about the same plan. So it looks like the proposed PUD, if I'm understanding it correctly, so there's access off West Amazon Drive, which we've been talking about. And it looks like seven of the parcels are accessing, actually, a hammerhead? And is that a private, yeah, I was going to ask, what's the status of that? What are you proposing?
I'm going to have Renee Cluff, our trustee surveyor engineer, answer that question because she drew this beautiful thing.
Okay, great.
Renee?
Deborah. So it will function as a private drive, but actually be owned as more like a panhandle drive. You've got three panhandle lots, lots, four, five, and six are panhandles, and the drive is over those panhandle drives. Lots seven, eight, nine, and 10 take their frontage via Vivian, but have access rights over the shared drive.
Okay. Yeah, for some reason, I thought I had seen somewhere in the record that there wasn't going to be access granted onto Vivian, so that must be wrong.
Correct. There's no, Vivian's not improved, so-
Okay.
And we're not proposing to improve it.
You're not proposing to improve it, okay. Okay. Not, thank you.
Are there any other commissioners that might have a question, or Mr. Cluse? If not, thank you, Mr. Cluse.
One more.
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
I raised it very late, John.
Okay.
I just want to make sure once again that I, that I understood you clearly, Mr. Cluse, and that has to do with the term "street." And you identified, I understood you to say that an unimproved right-of-way is still legally a street.
Yes. Staff will vouch for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other? Thank you, Mr. Cluse.
I'm sorry, I snuck in there. Would you mind if I-
Yes, we have Commissioner Nicoletto, Nicoletto, sorry.
I apologize. That was a very last-minute question. Just a quick question for you, Mr. Cluse. So both Deerbrook and Lane County are brought up actually rather frequently throughout the record, and I wanted to-
Deerbrook and, and what?
And the Lane County home builders.
Oh, okay, sure, sure.
I apologize. I probably should have been more specific than Lane County. And as I understand it, both of them did satisfy this 19-lot rule. So my question to you is, why is it now that this 19-lot rule doesn't satisfy clear and objective standards? As I understand, the stormwater requirements in the home builder versus Lane County case was so stringent that no application could possibly meet it, but as I understand, with these past cases, there have been PUDs that have been able to meet the 19-lot-
Two cases, home builders' association in Lane County versus City of Eugene, and the Southeast Neighbors versus City of Eugene and the Deerbrook Project.
Yes.
The first one, from 2001, was a challenge to the adoption of the whole new code. And when they adopted, when you adopt a whole new code, you're making a legislative decision, you're, you're making policy, you're making sausage, is the metaphor. And, and so the home builders appealed that, and, you know, the Luba just had to slog through in 80 pages and sort out the good and from the bad in the code, which they did. But, so that appeal did not involve an application for an individual project. That was writing code, and we were challenging the code. The Deerbrook matter did involve the 26 acres adjacent to the north of this, just beyond the barrier on West Amazon. But in that situation, cars came out of the project and turned onto, would turn, see, that would have developed, they would have improved West Amazon. If they'd actually developed that project, they would have improved West Amazon, and there would have been a connection right through that project. The barrier would go, and West, and West Amazon would be connected right through. So anybody coming out of one of the lots could hit West Amazon and either turn north and go to Springfield, or turn south and go to Springfield. That's how the issue was resolved there. They, they found compliance with the 19-lot rule based on being able to have secondary access. Here, we have to push that definition a little bit and really get, since you can't, you can't connect to the north, you can only disperse to the north, here we have to focus for the first time on what that standard really means. Does a situation where you can turn left and go to Springfield, or turn right and go 1,000 feet to the barrier, does that situation meet the 19-lot rule? So it's a different question here than it was in Deerbrook.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, the question is, does it mean you can resolve it, dispersed, doesn't mean secondary access, and we're good to go? Or you can say, "It's ambiguous, you can't apply it." Thanks.
Although we have no further green slips for discussion, I'll just ask one more time, are there's anyone in here who would like to speak in favor of the application? Oh, I'm sorry, you have a green slip?
Not in favor.
Well, okay. Are there any that would like to speak in favor at this time? Hearing none. Are there any that are neutral? Hearing none. Are there any that want to speak in opposition to this application?
So currently, I have only one, Larry Levinson.
Evening, Larry Levinson, 5552 West Amazon Drive in Eugene, 955, or, 97405. I'm the property owner directly across the street from this property, and I think the, you know, the, the issue is, is that there is really limited ingress and egress out of the neighborhood. And I think that's why this has come to the forefront with, previously with other neighbors, and tonight certainly with me. The West Amazon extension, where it ends at the barrier, first, Mr. Cluse indicated it was 5,000 feet, then 1,000 feet, it's somewhere between the two, is completely impassable. It's passable really on horseback, on foot, maybe with a motorcycle, off-road motorcycle. But it's, if you're running from fire, you might consider it passable on foot. Unless the city has plans to develop it, which I haven't heard anything about, it looks like that will not be forthcoming. There are other properties in that immediate neighborhood as well, that are about the same size, numerous older five-acre parcels that are either undeveloped or minimally developed. And if the same standard is applied here, it should be applied to those lots. And I think very quickly what would happen is that, that street, if, if you said, "This PUD is acceptable," and 10 houses were put on there, and at least seven more of them, seven more parcels of equal or greater size or utility are further, further north on West Amazon, you'd have to allow them to be developed as well. Give that access to, that opportunity to one property owner, you should probably give it to all of them. I think the neighborhood would be impassable. The line to get out of the neighborhood would be four blocks long with a stop sign on a blind turn, onto a blind turn on Fox Hollow. I think we have a problem here where the infrastructure in the neighborhood has not kept up with the desire to develop. We recently, in the summer of 2014, had a serious, had a serious fire event. Almost immediately, there was no ingress and egress out of West Amazon Drive for anybody. Most of us who were working during the day were, were locked out. Numerous people were locked in. There was nowhere to go. Thankfully, the Fire Department hit it, you know, aggressively, but it was still eight hours, no movement in or out of that stretch of West Amazon. Regardless of what Mr. Cluse is trying to argue, whether it's a fire issue or not a fire issue, it's an issue either way. And I think you have to take the approach that if you approve this, then you have to approve all the others. And I think then it would certainly create a life safety issue and, and a, and a general decline in livability, because there's no way to get out of the neighborhood. So that's about all I have to add tonight, and I would encourage, if you're, if you're unclear as to the, the nature of that neighborhood, take a quick drive up there, you can get a feel for it. It's a dead end in one direction with a, the BPA built a barrier there that is, looks like it will, was built for Armageddon. It's just absolutely massive. It's not something that's easily opened or, or gone through. It's, it's a dead stop. And that's at the end of West Amazon that we're talking about. Beyond that, it is not a street by any stretch of the imagination, even though it might be named such on our map. It's a trail at best. It's been washed out in at least two places. Common sense, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Hold on a second. Do any commissioners have any questions, or Mr. Levinson?
Yeah, can you just-
Commissioner Taylor.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
It jumped in quickly. So, can you please, just for context, can you, you said directly across the street from a PUD, so you're directly across the street, West Amazon, and one of the parcels?
Yeah, right about midway.
Okay, thank you.
Just a little south of Vivian there.
Any other commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Levinson.
Thank you.
I see no other individuals to testify, so at this time, I would ask, does staff have any comments or response at this time?
Yeah, I just have a couple comments here to make. The first thing that, one of the things that Mr. Close said in his statement was that, I think he used the word "staff" said that the 19-lot rule was met. I guarantee you that there's nowhere in our staff report that it says it was met. We did say that the unimproved section of West Amazon Drive is a right-of-way on paper. So, he was correct in that regard, but we did not state that the 19-lot rule was met. As far as the fire safety issues, just really quickly, I think a lot, the reason that you'll see in the staff report and the hearing's official report, there's not a lot of discussion about why that rule was put in place, why it's not in the partition criteria, why it's not in the general PUD criteria, I think is because what we had to work with here was the 19-lot rule being a part of the criteria that we had to review. So, why it's there wasn't really an issue that we addressed. The point was that it's there, and we have to determine as staff, do they meet it, or do they not meet it? And as you know, we decided they did not meet it. And then, as far as the Deerbrook issues that were brought up, I can confirm that Mr. Close correctly explained that the Deerbrook PUD down the street, they proposed to improve that right-of-way through. So, it was a different scenario there. This is before the city owned that property, and the Beverlys with the Deerbrook property proposed to improve that and make that connection to Martin Street over the hill. So, that's, so he was correct in that regards.
Any further comments or responses from staff?
Done here.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's been a lot of testimony about cases and needed housing, and, I mean, I could go on and on and on, but if you have specific questions that you'd want me to either address when you do deliberate, or write a quick memo on, I'd be happy to do that. There's just so much that was said, and I'm sure you guys have a lot of questions. I'll certainly be ready during deliberations to get into the meat of it, but if you have specific questions that I can prepare ahead of time, that would be helpful.
Anything further? Okay, at this time, do any of the commissioners have questions of staff?
Yes, I do. I would like, maybe for our deliberations, if we could get a copy of the Eugene Fire Code, the appendix that's referenced in the first response, and then also, could you direct me, I didn't print everything out, could you maybe direct me to where the subsequent fire marshal email is? I don't know which, which one that is, but I know it was referred to. If you know now, that's great.
I believe they were referring to page 252 in the record.
Okay. Thank you. That's correct.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, this is a question for city council, I'm sorry, for city councillor, legal opinion. Do we agree, does the city agree with Mr. Close's statement that an unimproved right-of-way satisfies the legal definition as used in the code 983256C for public local street? You have to answer that now, but-
Okay.
That's one we'll wait, we'll need to know.
Were there any other commissioners that had questions, Commissioner Baker and Commissioner Taylor?
Sure. I have a couple of questions. You can answer these now if it's simple, or bring an answer later. So, for the normal PUD, not the needed housing PUD, would the staff be able to consider egress, ingress in making their decision on whether to approve a PUD or not?
Can you restate it? I just want to make sure I get it.
Would staff be able to consider egress and ingress issues as part of their approval criteria?
No, you're talking about the general criteria.
General criteria, the general PUD criteria. And then, I have a couple of questions related to the site plan. Is it Vivian Drive? Just making sure I don't get it wrong. So, just whether Vivian Drive is an official, is a public right-of-way? Okay. And then, and the question there would be in that regard, so, if that's a public right-of-way, then the developer could have taken access off of Amazon from that public right-of-way if that, if that right-of-way were approved to city standards? Okay. And I'll have a few more, but I'll let other people ask questions.
Commissioner Taylor?
I'll start with a really simple one, and I think I already know the answer to, but it's very odd, so I just, the hearing's official decision refers to staff decision. I'm assuming that means staff report.
You are correct.
Okay, great. So, now, the more complicated one. Hopefully, I will ask this in a way that doesn't break any rules. So, what I want to disperse, there's a few definitions that really are at the crux of this question. From my perspective, one is disperse. We've been talking about local street, and it seems pretty clear that street is both improved and unimproved, so I feel pretty clear about that. So, is there a way to summarize what's in the record that addresses the definition of disperse? So, the various, wherever it's identified as evidence in the record that disperse is either seemingly directly or indirectly addressed, give some kind of additional insight to the meaning?
And we can follow up on that at deliberations, but I will take a minute to look up the page reference where the hearings official does address the definition, so.
Yeah, and I have that. I have that. It's more of, the record's bigger, you know, it includes the Eugene Code, it includes, it includes a lot of other pieces of evidence that I'm wondering if there's any other insight into the definition of disperse in items within the record that aren't directly discussed by the hearings official, but it's still evidence in the record. Does that make sense? Yeah.
It does.
Okay.
I'm not sure what we'll find, but-
I know, yeah. And if that's out, I'm willing to do that myself, if that's outside of, if that's an unusual request. So, the other question I have, which is interesting, that, so, I'm curious, so, if you can spend some time during our next meeting, kind of discussing if it's relevant, the "or." There's an "or" comment, sorry, in the standard. It would be good if I told you the standard. The standard EC, and actually, in the, I'm referencing the letter from Bill Close, and actually, I think he's got the code cited wrong, because there's one too many numbers. So, I'm not sure what the nine-point, you have it, 9.8325C.
6C.
6C, thank you. So, there's an "or." So, "The street layout of the proposed PUD shall disperse motor vehicle traffic onto more than one public local street when the PUD exceeds nine lots, or when the sum of proposed PUD lots and the existing lots utilizing a local street as a single means of the ingress and egress exceeds 19." I guess I want to understand-
How that sentence works.
Yep. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Commissioner Nicolletto?
I think my question can very much probably be answered in, as part of the memo that you'll be releasing for deliberations, but I was hoping that you could touch on more on page two of Mr. Close's appeal. He also brought this up in his verbal testimony. It's towards the bottom. It says, "When the city included this land in the buildable land inventory, it vouched to state that the land would be available for residential development under clear and objective standards." Could you go, hopefully in memo format, a little bit more in-depth about this, and also state kind of what that statement may mean, but also, too, does this mean that lands within the buildable land inventory need to be developed under needing housing criteria and general criteria, or is it, is there a certain standard for that? So, any sort of explanation on that would be great. Does that question make sense? Okay, cool.
I believe we go back to Commissioner Baker.
Yes, I had a, just had a question also about the, the issue with some words that were in your statement. So, it's a PC agenda, page two, that would be the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. It was a little confusing, the fifth paragraph that begins, "Although the HO's decision found that the approval criteria at ECC was met," that, somehow, that's a little confusing to me. He found that the criteria wasn't met, so I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, well, to be, to be clear, that subsection three is, involves the 30-foot landscape buffer, as the appellant discussed. Both staff and the hearings official concluded that this project met the standard, so that's-
Okay, so, you're talking about the clause below, not the clause above.
Correct. Sorry about that.
It's a little confusing, this, the placement, because normally, you discuss the clause before you say, you know, so that was a little confusing to me. And the same question down at the very bottom says, "Over 40 lots," so that's just an approximation, the very bottom line on that page. So, again, that's just indicating that more than the 20, more than the 19 lots. And then, I had a question. Now, I understand from the fire marshal's memo that this, this new rule about sprinklers for all of the properties was adopted in 2014, and I just would, just to have a little timeline, I'm just guessing that the, this, this needed housing criteria for the PUD would have been added in the 2001 or 2003 code, so there is a distinction in time. This was adopted way before anything about this fire exception, you know, was, that, just to clarify that that-
Yeah, it was adopted in the 2001 UCU amendments.
Are there any other commissioners who have questions? Excuse me, Commissioner Mills?
I want to go back to disperse. I know it's been asked, but I think it's important enough. I'm going to ask it in my own words, and ask you to consider and respond it when we deliberate. As I'm understanding what's been said and what's, what I've read, the term "disperse," as interpreted by the city, and the hearings official in this case, means "connect to more than one street," as it says, "disperse motor vehicle traffic onto more than one street." I'm understanding the city is inter, is using the word "connect" instead of "disperse," and so, I stand ready to be corrected, but that's the, that's what I'm hearing. That seems to be the way I'm understanding your interpretation. Just one verification of that, or correction?
Well, I don't know that there's anywhere in the record, in the staff report or otherwise, that we associated or equated the word "disperse" with "connect."
Then, I will want you to be very clear with me in what, how you're defining the word "disperse." And I think that's already been asked.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I had a, I had a question regarding the, the interpretation of-
If you could go into the mic?
Yeah, interpretation of the buffer. So, when you say that the, the hearings official and I student's staff found that that buffer area was being met, was that because the applicant had included 30-foot buffers? Okay, I just wanted to make certain that that was the case. And again, there seemed, my recollection, and I don't have the exact code provisions in front of me, but we have a lot of requirements where we say 10-foot setbacks and landscape buffers, and we don't, if you could clarify that whether those, all those other places specifically state whether a driveway is allowed or not, or whether it's just implied that it doesn't prevent you from accessing through this buffer area, or setback area, or whatever. If you could find some examples that we could use to consider.
Yeah, I mean, probably wouldn't be able to come up with examples if that's going to be creating new-
No, 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 I don't mean, I don't mean examples of projects. I mean, code language, places in the code where we, where we mention that there's a setback or a landscape buffer, but the, the application of that in, historically in the code has allowed driveways, or walkways, or whatever, to penetrate that buffer.
Any further, any further questions? Having no further questions of staff, the applicant now has an opportunity to provide a final rebuttal, if desired.
Of course. Thank you very much. I realized when I sat down and concluded my sermon, you had allowed me to talk for almost an hour, which I am embarrassed and thankful. So, just a few short points here. Kind of a metaphysical point. If we were filing under the general standards for PUDs in the South Hills, the cities could say yes, the city can say no, because they're all discretionary standards. Someone in the commission asked, "What would the staff do about the 19-lot rule and ingress and egress?" Well, there is no 19-lot rule if you apply under the general standards. So, I mean, if the, if the 19-lot rule is really something that should have bite in the context of the needed housing application, why wouldn't you deny every general application if there's not secondary access? I mean, it just, it does, there's a logical disconnect there. I mean, conceivably, if we were to drop this application and file under the general standards, you would say no, because you have discretion to say no, and you have an ingress/egress problem. So, there was a question about Vivian Drive. If it were physically developed, it would provide secondary access? Yes. It can't be physically developed legally consistent with the code, because under the code, under the needed housing approach, you may not grade any dirt, any slope, that's 20% or steeper. And if you look at your site plan, you will see those contour lines really start choking each other as you get close to West Amazon. So, that's not a possibility. Commissioner Taylor, you asked about the word "disperse," and does it have, I mean, you look at the balance of the code, do you find any help in assigning a meaning to the word "disperse"? The answer is no. I think the only place that it appears is in two code sections that basically apply the 19-lot rule to applications submitted under the needed housing standards. And so, in that situation, you go to the dictionary, and when you go to the dictionary, you get different definitions. And if you have different definitions, and under one, you can say yes, and under the other, you can say no, you've got an ambiguous standard, you can't apply it. There was a question about the buildable lands inventory, and whether or not land that's in the buildable lands inventory has to be developable under clear and objective standards. This, ladies and gentlemen, is one of the great legal controversies between my clients at the home builders and the city attorney's office that's putting together the vision, and it'll all get hashed out when the vision's done. And it'll all get hashed out when the vision's done, whenever that is, because the city, at least thus far, is preparing their buildable lands inventory to include land that's only developable under general standards, not under needed housing standards. And the home builders are saying, uh-uh, got to be under needed housing standards. If you can't develop the property under clear and objective standards, you can't count it towards your inventory. And the reason is, you don't know that you can develop it, because if land is only developable under general standards, it might be developable. It's not for sure developable, because the city can always say no. I would go, kind of getting off the point, but I mean, I'll go right back to the needed housing statute for, to verify that. I read it to you. It says, everybody's got to have a right to develop under clear and objective standards if it lands in the buildable land inventory, and the city may only apply general standards, discretionary standards, if the landowner has the right to develop under clear and objective standards. What that means is, if you're building your inventory with land that is only developable under general standards discretionary, you can't count it towards your inventory, because it's not developable under clear and objective standards. So that, that's the, the legal connection there. Commissioner Baker was talking about the 30-foot landscape buffer. Yes, the site plan is laid out to meet the 30-foot landscape buffer. However, we don't like it, because it scrunches the project. If we don't have to have the 30-foot landscape buffer, then, then everything can move out a little bit more and everybody's got a little bit more elbow room, so it makes a better site plan. Basic problem with the clear and needed housing standards throughout the code is, they're clear and objective, but they make for crummy site plans, because the standards are really kind of dumb, you know, the 20% grading limitation and so on. So that's why we're asking for relief. If we can get relief on that, because it's not lawful to apply it, then we can have a better site plan. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions on Mr. Close's rebuttal? Commissioner Taylor?
So, Mr. Close, I didn't see any additional information on the ORS Clear and Objective Standards 197.307.
Correct.
But I just wanted to double-check if you, if there's anything else in the record that you've put in there that looks at either one of your private, or one of your provided decisions or even staff that addresses the piece under Section 6 where it says, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but a local government may adopt and apply an alternative approval process for applications and permits for residential development based on approval criteria regulating in whole or in part appearance or aesthetics that are not clear and objective.
Right.
So do you have any, is there anything in the record that actually provides additional information on that?
Well, the, we, in, okay, first of all, we cited a handful of Lubbock cases and court of appeals cases. You can get into those. They're, they don't have to be in the record, it's law. And city attorney can summarize that for you for the ones that we have not. I, I guess I missed your, I don't understand the rest of your.
Well, I'm just curious, because that seems quite specific.
It is very specific. Oh, are you talking about the phrase "appearance or aesthetics"?
Yeah.
Okay, here's what it means. The city attorney won't agree with this, but you, the default is, the lands in the buildable lands inventory, it has to be developable under clear and objective standards. The property owner can opt into a discretionary track of general standards, okay? Has to be able to opt in, because he's always got to have the right to go under clear and objective standards. If he opts in, or she opts in, the standards still have to be clear and objective, except for standards that relate to appearance and aesthetics. Those are the ones that can be discretionary. So if you have a standard that's discretionary that relates to something other than appearance and aesthetics, can't apply it. Now, is there a lot of case law in that distinction right there? No. That's kind of recited in Group B decision from McCrallys, but I, I think you just have to go right to the language of the statute and, and say, that's pre-clear and objective. What's not clear and objective is when a standard's clear and objective, because that's a fuzzy issue. But for those code provisions that anticipate discretionary standards, the statute says they can, those general standards can only relate to appearance and aesthetics. Everything else has to be clear and objective. And, and does the current code comply with that? No. Has it come up yet in a local case and been litigated? No. But there it is in the statute. Which has been in place since 1997.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, the, yes, Mr. Close, I just had a question about the setbacks. Looking at the site plan, that, it's our attachment C and we have the revised one that was sent mail to us, but trying to clarify, so it appears from the site plan that the south part of the site is steep and you don't, wouldn't plan on building on that anyways.
Right.
So I'm talking about the setback, so, and it looks like there, there isn't probably, there isn't probably the same setback requirement, at least applied to the Vivian Drive perimeter, is that correct?
There, there's no 30-foot setback shown against the Vivian Drive, because.
And, and.
Or, or West Amazon, because.
West Amazon, because the city owns that strip? Is that what's happening there?
I'm forgetting.
Well, the city owns some sort of strip of property along.
About the Beverly property.
Oh, the city does not, ah, the city does not, based on the 2004 interpretation by the hearings official, which was advocated by the city staff.
Okay.
The city staff read an exception into that 30-foot buffer standard for property that's adjacent to a city street.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, you know, the, an exception that's not there. And so what you have is on the, on the west edge of the project, there's no street, so you see the 30-foot buffer.
Okay.
And then you would say, aha, on the south edge of the property against Fox Hollow Road, there is a buffer shown, see? And you'd say, well, why is it there? Because there's, it's adjacent to a right-of-way, so it should be exempt. But in fact, between, adjacent to the Fox Hollow Road, there's a public easement.
That's what I thought it was.
It's the bridle path.
Yeah, so that's the, that's, that's a public easement there.
So city staff said, aha, so that, that side's not really adjacent to the street, it's adjacent to the bridle path. You need your 30-foot setback, pal.
But this is on the south side, where it's very steep, that there really aren't buildable lots, so.
Exactly.
You're not planning on building there. I'm trying to figure out where the, this.
If we didn't, if we didn't have, if we weren't subject to 30-foot setback, because city's not allowed to apply it, the practical impact is that on the west side of the project, that one lot right there.
Lot one.
Lot one, that person could breathe more and the development could move to the west more, and then everybody could jog down a few more feet and everybody have a little bit more elbow room.
So the, the main concern is this, this separation to Vivian Drive?
The, just the west edge of the project where that 30-foot, the, the only place the 30-foot setback actually pinches the development proposal is on the west edge.
That, that would be, okay, yeah, okay, that's what I was looking at. So that's really the only area that, right now, that is impacted by this 30-foot.
Practically impacted, that's correct.
Okay, all right.
I see no further questions?
Thank you all for your patience.
Thank you very much, Mr. Close. At this point in time, I'd like to close the public hearing. Public hearing is officially closed. I'd like to thank you for, all for your participation. I'd like to remind everyone that we will, we will be meeting again on February 8th to begin deliberations on this appeal. We will be meeting in the slot room at the atrium building at 99 West 10th Avenue, starting at 11:30. No testimony can be accepted at that meeting. Thank you very much.